Good evening, folks. I'm going to call to order the October 12th City Council meeting for the city of Citrus Heights. We will start with the flag salute. So, you know, I know I see a group of young men in the audience. How would you gentlemen, who I met with earlier, like to come up front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Y'all can be on TV and wave to your friends when you're done. So if the audience would join me in standing, please. We'll come right down here to the microphone. Yep. It's good enough. Just use your... All right. Start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you stepping up on the fly there. All right. If the City Clerk, Amy Van, would read the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and 18 TU-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, October 16th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. And for all of you who have one of these, feel free to put it on vibrate. Thank you. First item, approval of the agenda. Of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pardon me. Motion carries. Five-oh. Presentations. First presentation, please.
Our first presentation tonight is a recognition of volunteers within the city of Citrus Heights.
Welcome, Sandy Moravio.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Citrus Heights Police Department, and this is absolutely amazing. It's absolutely my honor to be here and speak about the volunteers that absolutely manage our city throughout the day, working alongside our staff, and just taking care of all the things that are going on in your neighborhoods. So, back in April, we were here, and we had a smaller group of volunteers, the city volunteers, and for the 20-year celebration and anniversary of the cityhood, we wanted to recognize all of the volunteers that we could possibly come up with. So we have spent probably three months looking for all of you, and hopefully we didn't miss any of them. I'm sure we probably have, so we have a plan for that in the future as well, and we'll need your help with that. But we're really honored to have all of you here today. What I'm going to do is just do a real quick kind of update on what we're going to be doing in the future with our program, and then at the conclusion of that, we will bring you up in your groups and have you come up with council and take a photo with the council members. And at the time when you're done with your group photo, if you want to go back to out the door over here on the right, we will have certificates and a nice notebook journal for you, and thank you for your service. And then, of course, you're welcome to stay for the council meeting, or you're welcome to head on home. So again, thank you so much. It's so great to see this room packed tonight, and it's absolutely all of our honors to be here with you. Excuse me. So as we celebrate our 20-year anniversary, it was important that we take our volunteer program a little bit more to a different level, and we want to make sure that we're honoring you annually and have a specific program for you as a group. Tonight's event, we invited and located 137 volunteers, and I'm sure there's many out there that we're not aware of that do individual volunteering for, you know, people in the community that we're probably not aware of on a daily basis. So we have a plan for that. So tonight, obviously, we're honoring our volunteers that work for the city, the three campuses, City Hall, or City Hall, the Community Center, and the Police Department. We have neighborhood and community volunteers that are in the group, and then we have another plan for people that we might have missed, that we can have folks in the community submit a nomination to a form that we're going to have on our website. It'll be posted tomorrow, where you can nominate somebody that volunteers. It might be somebody that makes quilts, which we've done before. It might be somebody that just volunteers regularly, and maybe people in their neighborhood or assists people that need assistance for, you know, different reasons. So we really want to reach out to you, and if you know of somebody and we have missed somebody, to please fill out these applications, excuse me, so that we can bring them here in April with us. And it's not a nomination where we pick volunteers, it's we want to get all the volunteers here. So that's our goal for kind of moving forward in April, and of course, all of you must come back, too. So this is the form. This will be on our website. It'll be on the Police Department's website under the Volunteer section, and it'll also be on a city website. So we'll put it kind of in two different places to make sure people are able to locate it. And then, our program moving forward, and tonight as well, you'll receive a certificate of appreciation, a gift as a token, and showing our appreciation for the work that you've done, and also it includes the 20-year logo for you to have. And then, when we... Our city volunteers and the people that work for the Police Department, we're going to start a program in April that talks about your number of years of service or your hours. This is something we do at the Police Department, but we're starting, if you look up on the screen. We're going to start doing a volunteer pin, and then you can have your years of service or hours, depending on how you work and how many hours or time that you spend working for the city. So those will be coming soon, and those will be distributed to you in the next week or two. So in talking about the groups we have tonight, this kind of gives a list of everyone, and we're going to call you up by group, and we're going to start off with combining a few of the smaller groups of folks. So for those that are in the audience, council members, if you'd like to come down.
Yes, we'll come down here.
So, we are going to start off with our business groups, and we have a couple of folks here tonight, if you'll come up to the podium. And we have our marching band folks that are in the audience, please come on forward. Don't be shy. We know you're here. You RSVP'd. Okay, the Parade Committee. Folks in the Parade Committee, Sunrise Marketplace, and the Cert team.
All right.
All right, we got one.
One.
That's good. There's a few more out there. Come on forward. So we want to... Jen's taking the pictures, yeah. Thank you for your time and your service to the city.
Let's try to get a bigger group.
Yeah, let's go bigger here. So our City Hall and Community Center volunteers, come on down. We know you're out there. Thank you. You want to go out back through the right door, you can get your certificates. Thank you. So the Friends of the Library, I'm not sure if they were all able to make it, or if anyone were able to show up, but I think there's a few of them here. Ah, there they are. Okay, come on down. These are our library volunteers, and many of them spend quite a bit of time there taking care of the precious things we call books, and now all the audios that are out there. So welcome. Okay, so now, our next group, we have the History and Arts Commission, the Construction Board, and the Planning Commission. Folks, come on down. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service to Citrus Heights. Got to watch out for this next group. The Police Department, come on down. You guys are hard to tell. You guys can hug it in. Come on. Pretend like you like each other. I will tell you that the volunteers work really hard at our Police Department. I know all the volunteers do, but I'm a hard charger-driver here, and they're phenomenal. They really do a great job, so we're very blessed to have all of you here.
It's not a mugshot, Charlie.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your service. So our next group would be the Reach and Neighborhood Associations. Come on up. These are the real worker bees, too. They take care of the neighborhoods and let us know what is going on at all times, and we really appreciate all the help you do working with the city and the Police Department. We good? All right. Thank you. And now we have our service organizations. As everyone knows, we have many great organizations in Citrus Heights, from Rotary to the Women's Club. The Service Clubs, folks, if you would like to come down. A couple of them I know at the last minute were not able to make it, so come on down. That's the Optimists. Yep. Everybody's Service Clubs. Rotary, Lions Club, Women's Club. There we go. We have a lot of people that work in many clubs. It's awesome. Big smile.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our presentations. So if the council members would like to say anything, or... And we'll meet the rest of the volunteers when you're ready. If you're not in the presentation, or I'm sorry, in the council meeting, you can go to the back, and we'll get you gifts.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
You know, from a city perspective, and again, it doesn't matter whether you're a Service Club or raising money for the community and giving back, whether you give time at the library, CHPD, Community Center, wherever, quite frankly, we couldn't do it without your help. You know, some of the jobs are not the funnest to do, but y'all make them look easy, and you do it with a smile. I want to give a special shout-out to the library folks. I grew up going to the library after school. We didn't have daycare or afters, you know, care. I'd hang out at the library and get help from folks there, whether they worked there or I'd just track them down, and so thanks for all that you do and the money that you raise for the Sylvan Oaks Library. So, thank you, everybody. Anybody else want to say anything? All right. Good job, Sandy. You know how to clear a room. Would you? All right. Next item, Amy.
Next item, presentation number five, is a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
And I've asked Vice Mayor Steve Miller, I've got a frog in my throat, to go ahead and give the proclamation, and I know Elaine Whitefeather is here, so if you would like to come up front, and Chief, if you'd like to come up as well.
Come up here. Thanks for surprising me with this one.
I know, but I'm...
We have a proclamation from the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community. It is a goal of this administration for our communities to be safe, healthy, and peaceful. And no citizen of Citrus Heights, woman, man, or child, is exempt from domestic violence and family violence. This social issue crosses all racial, social, religious, ethnic, geographic, and economic groups, and the impact of this issue affects every part of our community. Domestic violence is widespread epidemic in our society, causing behavioral and health challenges for victims and their children. Research indicates that a child's brain development is impacted by witnessing domestic violence, and that the violence outside the home can be linked to violence inside the home. One in three girls and one in four boys in over 40% of marriages in California will experience domestic violence. One in three adults have witnessed domestic violence, and the annual cost to U.S. companies is about $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover, and lower productivity. So now, therefore be resolved, we reaffirm the commitment of the city of Citrus Heights to reducing violence in our homes as well as on our streets. We urge all citizens to participate in the activities planned by the Community for Peace and other partnering organizations during this month. Citizens should also take this opportunity to educate themselves about the impact of domestic violence in California and to become familiar with resources and programs available. This month, let us remember the victims of domestic violence, celebrate the survivors, and work together to eliminate violence against women and children from our community. In recognition of the impact that domestic and family violence has on the health and well-being of our community, the City Council does hereby proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And our Mayor Jeff Slowey has signed it, and it's been attested by the City Clerk, Amy Van.
Thank you.
A pleasure to...
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, for all you do, I'll give you two seconds. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do for the community.
Thank you very much. Members of City Council, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you once again. The city of Citrus Heights, to me, as an activist that has been in this movement for 40 years, would be the template, would be the city I would ever want to work with, that would ever tell any domestic violence activist and advocate, this is how you collaborate, and this is how you partner to have peace. I thank you for the many years that you have walked by our sides, and what you have done to continue to not just encourage us, but invest in peace in this community, and thank you for helping a community for peace grow into the community we are. I thank you very much on behalf of all of the survivors and their children.
Thank you.
And I really have to thank Chief Lawrence for just like jumping in the river with me. Chief, two words?
Well, thank you. I can't say it better than Elaine. The Police Department is proud to stand by her shoulder to shoulder, and I want to thank the City Council for all of your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, folks, it is Awareness Month, and, you know, just to give you a little background, within our Police Department, under our former chief, he started what was called Divert, where we actually have advocates for, you know, counselors, if you will, that ride with our officer certain nights a week, and the sooner we can get services and assistance to somebody in need, the better. I've been doing the City Council gig for 14 years, and I've always done a quarterly ride-along, so 14 times four, if my math is right, that's roughly 86 times I've gone out, and I can tell you this, I have never gone out where we haven't at least gone to one DV call when I've been out on the ride-along. And that's not to say it's, you know, epidemic in the city, it's everywhere, and it crosses all socio-economic boundaries. You know, we're good people here in town, but there are, you know, instances of domestic violence. So Elaine, again, thank you for what you do. Thanks for the Police Department, because it is a culture. You have to be aware of it. The ones I feel the worst for are the situations where there's kids involved, you know, the parents, not always a lot you can do there, but when the kids have to see it, that's not good. So again, just be aware of it, and if you see it, you know, try to get them some help or let somebody know to see if, you know, somebody else can help them. Next item, Amy.
Next item is City of Citrus Heights 20 Year Celebration, Top 20 Presentation.
All right. What do you got first tonight, Devin? What are we gonna... What list are we gonna...
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Devin Rodriguez, Economic Development Manager with the Community and Economic Development Department. Maybe we should shorten some of the words, lot titles there. So tonight, we have Top 20 Best Photos, and I am not going to show you all 20 photos, but I did, we did include kind of a selection of them for fun to show them, and then we will be posting them on the website for everybody to see, and, you know, putting it out to everybody, so if anybody would like to... It is a, we got mostly submissions through email, not through our social media, so I did include a handful of the ones that we received via email that I thought were, you know, extra special or kind of invoked memories or emotions for folks. So I'll just go through them quickly. I know you guys aren't going to be able to read this whole thing or anything like that, but I wanted to include this letter that we received along with the photo, and basically, this mother, her daughter was involved, or her daughter was involved with the beauty pageant with Mary Purvis, and it just has some wonderful memories for them as a family, and she shared that it really taught her daughter a lot of life skills, and so I thought that was a really touching memory as well as a tribute to Mary. This picture was taken before City Hall was built, and it was a, it's a coyote walking in the middle of the day on land, which I have not, I've seen lots of turkeys, but I have yet to see a coyote here.
You've probably seen less turkeys now.
[laughing].
But for all of you folks who have doubted when I said we do have coyotes in town, especially down the street here behind Walmart and Costco, there they are.
So there it is.
And I told you so.
This is an old photo of when, it's Greenback Lane in Mariposa there, and so we have a couple of pictures like this of folks with the street signs. I think it was one of the street signs going up. An old oak tree at Stock Ranch, the nature preserve, for anybody who has not gone back there, is really beautiful back there, and we thought this photo just really showed that up there, yeah. Ladies in white, I think a lot of you have probably seen this photo before. Spooktacular, which is this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 in Antelope Crossing. This was one of the best photos, I think, or the best photos that we've had of Spooktacular, so we wanted to make sure we featured that. Annual Shop with a Cop, and this is the superheroes of the day. Thought that was a great photo. Red, White, and Blue Parade, one of the city's events. This is the Carrick Family Ranch, so this is one of our older photos that we have as part of the archives, and so we thought this was a really neat photo that we wanted to include as well.
You know, that's now Cbar C Park.
Yes.
Yeah. The C for Carrick.
Mm-hmm. And then, so the next one is going to be Top 20 City Landmarks, and so stay tuned for that, and we only have two more to go.
Whoa.
And then the year will be over.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Appreciate it. All right. Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates. Mr. Fox, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. The Cable Commission and SAC Transportation Authority neither have had meetings since our last official meeting here. I did attend the Leadership Citrus Heights opening meeting to meet with the new class members and the staff there. It was a great evening and a time to get together. I'm glad to see that that program is back. I took part of it, part in that program before I ever started doing things with the city and found it to be invaluable. I received an invitation from Alfred Sanchez and his neighborhood group for their monthly barbecue. I went over with, my wife and I went over to visit with them, a great group of folks, and enjoyed spending some time with them on a Sunday afternoon, just talking about their neighborhood and things that were going on. I attended the Community for Peace Awards banquet, and during that event, they awarded to CHPD officers David Morantz and Dave Jones awards for their work with the community on domestic violence prevention and enforcement activities, a well-deserved reward. Wonderful evening, very well-presented, and a wonderful group of folks there that evening that were in attendance. And on the Saturday, we had the Citrus Heights Vets Battle of the Band and Barbecue, an excellent time there, good group of folks that showed up. I was particularly impressed with the Ghost Soldier Award or Presentation Ceremony that they did in celebration of those, or honoring those vets who did not return from their time in service, and so it was a very touching time. It was attended by several members of the current and active marine recruiting stations in Sacramento, and it was a, they did a wonderful job in their presentation and their representation of our armed forces. And I think that was it on my calendar.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Bruins.
Thank you. Last week, I met with the Reach Board, and they had quite a bit of discussion about the new way funding is going to be rolling out for them, so I think they've got their arms around it pretty well. This is a transition year for them, so they're having to kind of scramble to meet deadlines, but they are well on their way, and I think gave a report from each of the Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Associations, and so it's kind of a transition year for them, and they're doing fine. And they are enjoying the shed that they're now using, commented on what a valuable asset that is. And then, today, I also attended the Community for Peace banquet, which was wonderful. And then today, I had Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and they went over their finances. It was a pretty straightforward board meeting, talked about some of their internal things they had, housekeeping things they had to deal with, expressed gratitude for the fact that the pop-up stadium was approved by the council at our last meeting, and distributed an article in the Business Journal about that, so I'm very pleased about that, and they're actually being approached by some of the agents of various acts that are interested in performing, so that's good, too. And then after that, I left and went over to our Citrus Heights Youth and Community Center and met the new Executive Director of Campus Life, who replaced Rob Massey after he passed away, and he'll be coming forward before the council to introduce himself. I think they picked a great guy, he has a lot of enthusiasm, very intrigued by the story of how our youth center got started and how it got to be where it is today, and very grateful to the city for the support we've given it over the years. We also met, sanitation board met this week after a one-month recess. We had, yesterday, we had a report on the progress of our EcoWater project out at the wastewater treatment plant, and it is moving forward pretty much on schedule. There are actually eight major construction projects going on concurrently there. If you go on their website, you can kind of get a visual idea of just what that looks like. It's a very complex project to administer, and we looked at the budget... administer. And we looked at the budget, and they're, they're below where we thought it would be at this point. And, and Vic Caetano is the project engineer on that project. And one of the things he told the, our board, which, which was an interesting take, is that, that doesn't mean that everything is coming in at a budget. That means that some of these contractors are struggling to keep up. So they're really managing this very, very closely, because they haven't spent the money they should have spent by now. So I hats off to Vic, because he's doing a phenomenal job, and this is, continues to move forward. We also voted, as you may recall, this is two boards. It's Regional Sand, and then it's also Sacramento Area Sewer District, which represents the pipes that leave our house and connect to the bigger pipes. And Regional Sand has always had a program for what they call non-rate, non-fee income that can be used for purposes other than maintaining the system. And they use it for lifeline services, for people that need assistance in paying their bills, some septic tank conversions for failing septic tanks, providing some incentive for businesses, giving them a break on their sewer impact fees. And with the increasing issue of homeless people at the American River Parkway, funding to address that, to help keep the Parkway clean. So we've never had a, a fund from the, from the Sacramento Area Sewer District side, which are what I call the small pipes, just the large pipes. So we approved, we have a million dollars annually that we can contribute to those kinds of things, to help people that need help and qualify in getting their, their, their bills paid and, and getting some relief for people that have failing septic systems, which is, I think would be a huge issue, as well as some economic incentives for our business community. So I was happy to see that pass and to know that that funding will continue to come in. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bruins. Mr. Daniels.
No meetings, but did want to announce that the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, which I'm a board member on, has a hearing board vacancy for a medical professional. There's a five-member board that meets monthly as needed, and they hear and decide upon petitions for variances and that kind of a thing. And that you get a whopping $75 for every meeting. So if you have nothing to do and are looking to get rich, and you're a medical professional, you can send an application in on this, for this position by contacting the clerk of the hearing board at 874-4809, or by email at hearingboard@airquality.org. And then I would also just like to take a moment to publicly wish a happy birthday to my daughter Savannah, who turned a whopping one years old last week.
Oh, my.
Happy birthday, baby.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Slowey. This is the busy season, I think, and I'll try and be quick. But Friday on the September 29th, Mayor Slowey, myself, and council members Bruins and Fox attended the Leadership Citrus Heights Kickoff Mixer.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess, what is it, a nine-month program?
Yes.
So nine months will be giving birth to a whole new set of leaders here in Citrus Heights. So look forward to that. And they were all there bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. So on Sunday, October 1st, I did go out and attend the softball game between Sacramento Police Department and Citrus Heights Police Department at Rayleigh Field. Mayor Slowey was there with his wife and two of your grandkids. I never did hear the score. We were ahead when I left.
We kicked butt.
Yes, right on. And then headed over to Alfred Sanchez's, Sanchez's annual barbecue, neighborhood barbecue, and that was a lot of fun. And Brett, you know this from National Night Out, I had a hot dog at Rayleigh Field and a hot dog at Albert's. So I got my fill. And
Just two.
The fall, yeah, just two. That's it. Friday, October 6th, did go to the Community for Peace, Ninth Annual Celebration of Hope. And the keynote speaker was Ruthie Bolton. And here's a world-class Olympic gold medalist, professional athlete, and she talked about being a survivor from domestic violence. It was very inspiring. Saturday, ran a pot of chili over to the Women's Club Chili Cookoff and Car Show. Didn't hear from them, so I guess my wife didn't win. And then headed over to the American Legion's Battle of the Bands. Oh, thank you, Nan, again, for cooking the chili. I needed to get that in there. Headed over to the American Legion's Battle of the Bands and Barbecue fundraiser at Rush Park. And that brings us to today. Just wanted to add on the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting that Jeanne and I attended, that on, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, October 21st, from 11:00 to 4:00 is the Sunrise Crafts, Carvings, and Carnival. And they're actually going to have a live pumpkin carving. Enter a chance to win a, to participate in a hands-on pumpkin carving event. They have a professional carver there. And that should be worth checking out. And there'll be 72 crafters as well, so you can get your Christmas shopping done. This Saturday, we have Spooktacular, starting at 11:00 AM, out at Antelope Crossing, over at the Rayleigh's Exit 100, Antelope Road. And let's see. Oh, also on the 21st, which is Saturday, is the Halloween, Halloween Parade on Auburn Boulevard, which starts at Twin Oaks and ends at the Harvest Festival at Rush Park. Also, the mall mentioned that on the, on Halloween, there'll be trick-or-treat from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Sunrise Mall. Put on with, who do they partner with? Bayside, thank you. Is that Bayside Citrus Heights? Yeah. So I hear that's a great event for the kids. And last but not least, I did want to mention on Friday, November 4th, the Citrus Heights Homeless Assistance Resource Team will be having their annual spaghetti feed. And that'll be at Holy Family. It's $15 all you can eat spaghetti over at Holy Family Church. If you want more, you can just show up at 5:30 and, and get a ticket. If you want more information, go to citrusheightsheart, H-A-R-T, dot org. And I probably said enough, not too much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. And again, Steve covered the baseball game, but it was good to see the second annual, or softball game. Citrus Heights PD, yeah, we did very good against SAC PD, and we'll just leave it at that. Did attend Secog Transportation Meeting last week. Citrus Heights is being recommended for funding for two projects. We meet again on the 19th as the full board, roughly to the tune, slightly under $1 million and right around $900,000 and some change, for the Citrus Heights Electric Greenway Multi-State Multi-Use Trail Project, as well as the Mariposa Safe Routes to Schools Project. So let you know next time we meet, but 99% sure that should be awarded on the 19th. You mentioned Spooktacular this Saturday. Backing up just a bit, I also, Secog had a all-day retreat last Friday, where we planned some of our guiding principles for next year. As soon as I get those in writing, I'll share them with the rest of the council. Another item tomorrow, it's the final Household Hazardous Waste Pickup over at Sunrise Mall. That's where all your contaminants, household chemicals, cleaners, auto fluids, et cetera. You, you don't have to have an appointment, but you can just show up as long as you can prove you live in Citrus Heights. Eight to one, behind the Women's Macy's at Sunrise Mall. You can drop off your hazardous waste material, and they, well, you don't even have to get out of your car. They'll collect it out of your trunk, out of your van, whatever. And then also, if you haven't seen this, this is kind of interesting, but they're also doing a composting workshop. So there's the traditional, and then they do the worms. The worms are kind of, I don't want the worms at my house, but it's interesting to watch them go through their demonstration. Again, it's, and it's great compost when it's all done. So it's all free to go. That's also this Saturday, 9:30 is vermiculture composting, and 11:30 is traditional. So with that, I think you all covered everything else. So that's it for the council comments. Next item, Amy.
Next item is public comment. And members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, I have three speaker sheets. And Thomas Spencer, I'm assuming you want to talk specifically when Item 10 comes up? Okay, so I'll leave you for there. And then Arthur Kederling will be first, followed by Tamara Barberi, right? Barbara.
Arthur.
Barber. So Arthur, you're, you're first. Come on down. And I know, Arthur, this is really about number eight, Transportation Development Act, but since it's on the consent calendar, I'm not going to pull anything. So if you just might talk about it.
Uh, I was just wanting to find out how, how long are you going to be doing the study of, of the, of what you're doing for Citrus Heights alone right now? Can anyone?
Yeah, I'm looking for, yes, Mary, give me a quick, April.
April.
So from now to April.
All right. Because there is needs, you know, not just Citrus Heights, but everywhere else. And I thank you that you are doing this study.
You're welcome. We can kind of control Citrus Heights. We can't control everywhere else.
I know that. I realize that.
Thank you, Arthur. Tamara.
Thank you, council, for having us here today. We always come yearly to this event when we do the award ceremonies for, for me, the Citrus Heights Parade. And I am Mary Purvis. She is here with us through me. She would have turned 90 last August, by the way. And we are continuing her tradition. I just did her Miss Sacramento Pageant two weeks ago, and last spring, Miss Citrus Heights. I've changed it up a little. It's now Miss Any Woman 20 and Over. And I have young and teen. And I got some men and boys, too. Couple of the queens from Citrus Heights are here tonight, and we look forward to this event every year, so they can introduce themselves to you. These are your queens.
All right, bring them out.
And king. Can't forget him.
All right. Take just a few minutes.
Hi, I'm, okay, I'm Christina Ma, Miss Citrus Heights. I have been Miss Citrus Heights since March of this year. And I love it because I get to volunteer all over Citrus Heights. There's been lots of events, like the Vets Event. I got to volunteer there. There's been so much. I get to help. And that's why I joined it. So that's me.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jay Cutter. I joined this pageant group to meet new people. I was picked on in high school for many different things. This pageant group has actually helped me get a job out in Lincoln. I now work at Thunder Valley Casino. So it's been a wonderful time. A lot of work has gone into it. I am a, a King Ambassador for Citrus Heights, and I am now Mr. Sacramento.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Sherri Cazab, and I'm the Class Queen Ambassador. And I'm grateful for being here with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Marcy Vader, and I'm a Class of Queens Ambassador. It's a pleasure to be here with you all today.
Thank you.
Haley's daughter, or Sherri's daughter Haley. You don't have kids yet, right?
No.
Just making sure. Sherri's daughter Haley is my young Miss Citrus Heights. Say hi. Yes, she'll say hi. At least wave.
Just say hi. There you go. Thank you.
We're, we're a learn and progress.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yes. See, look at these beautiful lights. And you didn't know this, but you're on TV.
Yeah, there's 50,000 people watching you, right?
No pressure, no pressure. Thank you, council.
Maybe not quite.
We have Mike, Sacramento here, too. Wave, ladies. Orange, Miss Orangeville's here.
Yep.
All right, thanks for coming. Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. All righty. That's all the speaker sheets, again, with the exception of Thomas Spencer, which we'll hear after Item 10. Next item, Amy.
Next item is Consent Calendar Items 7, 8, and 9.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second by Vice Mayor Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstained. Motion carries 5-0. Next item, please.
Next item, public hearings. There are none, so regular calendar, Item 10. The subject is Creation of Competitive Grant Program and Dissolution of the History and Arts Commission. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the History and Arts Grant Program Guidelines and Application, and introduce for a first reading and waive the reading of the entire ordinance, and ordinance repealing Chapter 2, Division 2 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code regarding the dissolution of the History and Arts Commission.
Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, we're here to present to you both the creation of a competitive grant program, as well as the consideration of the dissolutionment of the History and Arts Commission. If you recall, we came to you in August in a study session to talk to you about these two issues and to present some different options that are available. We gained your feedback, excuse me. We also got feedback from community members, and we are back tonight with both the details of a grant application program, as well as the consideration of dissolving the commission. The History and Arts Commission was founded soon after incorporation. And the purpose of the commission was to accomplish the municipal municipal code goals that you see before you here tonight. The commission has done a great amount of projects and has accomplished most of their goals. And at this point, commission activities can be confined to probably Goals 5 and 6, for the most part. But most of the things that the commission needed to accomplish, then it included things like preserving our history, because prior to incorporation, the county hadn't really done that. The commission has completed what it set out to do, for the most part. And so because of that, because the commission's goals have largely accomplished, because the Brown Act in itself hampers project development, and because the commission overhead is outpacing its project budget at this point, staff tonight is recommending that the city council dissolve the History and Arts Commission. However, the goal tonight is to present to you a new program in the form of a grant pool that outside organizations can apply for, because the city can have the goal of preserving history and promoting arts, while also engaging community members who are undertaking these type of efforts within the community in their own organizations. And so that's the sort of thing that a grant program would do, is that it would bring partnerships with outside organizations, leverage against those activities that are happening, and to help promote those groups that are already doing great work in the community. So with that, we have some details that we've put together that are in your packet in the form of program guidelines, as well as a application form. These are the basic guidelines that staff has put together for your consideration tonight. This grant program is very similar to our Economic Development Support Program, as well as our Community Support Program that's for nonprofits. It's also similar to our Reach Model that we currently have going on. And so we know that this type of interaction with the community and support of the community is successful in other arenas. And that's what we're recommending for history and arts as well. The type of guidelines that we put together include the fact that this would be a rolling application. It wouldn't be that we would have a certain timeframe at the beginning of the fiscal year where people would apply, and then you consider all the applications at once, and then you make awards. Rather, this would be similar to our Economic Development Support Program that's rolling throughout the fiscal year. When a project comes up, a group could apply for funding, provided that there's funding available at that point. But it would be available throughout the fiscal year. Staff would review these applications and make funding recommendations, given that we've developed a good amount of institutional knowledge on this topic. We feel confident that we can review these applications. We feel confident that we can review these applications and make appropriate recommendations for your consideration. We're also recommending a budget of twenty thousand dollars for these type of projects. And then any project that is under five thousand dollars, we're recommending that the city manager have the opportunity to approve those applications. Anything under that dollar amount would not go to the council, rather, staff would review, recommend, city manager would make the ultimate decision under that dollar amount. In excess of that, these, those applications would go to the Quality of Life Committee. They would review the application, make a recommendation for the council to consider. We would also recommend that organizations be able to apply for a maximum of ten thousand dollars. The idea being that they could complete a significant project, but didn't take the entire project budget. And so we'd cap people at ten thousand dollars. And also, we would be very attentive to the fact that we want to make sure that these funds are used appropriately and effectively. And so we would be awarding their funds on a reimbursement basis, unless a grantee could demonstrate to us that they need an advancement of funds, which staff would make, make an exception in that case, but we would follow up with them to make sure that the appropriate documentation was eventually submitted. And of course, at the time in which the project is completed, the group would come to the council and report on the success of that project, so you can see how these funds are being used in the community. We've also developed recommendations on what organizations could be eligible to apply for these funds. We've included eligible organizations on the left-hand side there, which we tried to make it broad enough so that any type of person engaging in a heart, in a art or history type activity could be eligible. So you wouldn't necessarily have to be a nonprofit organization. You could, say, be a student artist, a photographer, a resident who wants to do something. We wanted to craft it fairly broadly, so that those type of organizations or people could apply. But we did want to make consideration of the fact that if someone is a for-profit business, that that for-profit business would have to partner with another eligible entity in order to receive the funds. This would be the change in the fiscal impact to the city that this type of project would have. Currently, the History and Arts Commission costs a little under thirty thousand dollars to administer, as well as to complete projects. And you see that broken down both by overhead and the project budget, which is a little under thirteen thousand dollars. The competitive grant program that we are suggesting would be a budget of twenty thousand dollars for the community. And so it would substantially increase the amount of project dollars that are able to go into the community to complete these sort of projects. Should the council approve this item tonight, the next steps on this would be to hear the second reading of this ordinance on October twenty-sixth. While that's happening, staff would be finalizing grant program elements such as outreach. Heard that from our stakeholder outreach, that it is important that members in the community knows that this exists, and that they can apply for it, and that's, it's a good thing. That would be one thing that we would work on in the next couple of months. And then the idea is that we would have a pilot grant program released to the community in December, so that people could apply for kind of mini projects within the next six months that they could complete prior to the end of the fiscal year. That being said, no project that is currently underway with the History and Arts Commission would go away. We would make sure that those would continue, and we would set aside current project funds to complete those projects. For example, we just had a great event at Sunday Fun Day at Rush Home. The, our commission members and the Historical Society forged a really wonderful partnership where they provided events to the community at Sunday Fun Day. Things like that, we would absolutely make sure that they continue, and we would partner with existing commission members and members of the community to see those to fruition. So both of those things would be happening at the same time. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and the recommendations from staff are before you.
So Catherine, one question. You talk about projects underway in flight. Is one of them our walnut outside there for?
Yes.
I, I don't know what we're calling it, but...
Yes, that would be one. I actually spoke to Commissioner Currington yesterday, and we're talking about plans for that. And yes, that's certainly on the list.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Questions? Can you go back to the, the slide that you had before that one?
Before?
That one?
This one?
One more, I think.
Okay.
One more.
Okay. That's okay.
That one, right there.
Okay.
Sorry. So my question is this. So we're going to budget twenty thousand dollars a year for this to be applied as people, I mean, to be funded as people apply and gets approved.
The, the total pot that people can apply for would be twenty thousand?
All right.
Yes.
So every year, we're going to, part of our general budget's going to be twenty thousand dollars for grants for History and Arts to be applied for throughout the following twelve-month period.
Yes.
As they come in and develop them. And so that won't be replenished again until the following budget year. So if all twenty thousand gets allocated out in seven months, we're done for the year.
Yes.
Is that my understanding?
Mm-hmm.
And then, so, the question I have is, so if it doesn't all get used, is, does it go away then? Can it roll over to have a larger allocation year the following year?
So it would be zero-based budgeting, and the idea is that it would not carry forward. And we would also ask our applicants to complete their projects prior to June thirtieth.
Okay, so if, but let's think about that a little bit, because if, if the money doesn't get requested until March or April, but it's a viable project. I think that we should have some, some latitude there for them to get it done, and they don't, it doesn't seem reasonable to me that they have to have it done by the end of June. All the, all the requests would have to come at the beginning of the fiscal year, basically, for that to be accomplished, because most projects that are worthwhile are going to take time.
Yeah.
So I think we should kind of flesh that out a little bit.
Okay.
And then, the other thing I think that we should take into consideration, if we have funding left, and we don't have other applications pending, and if someone has a project that could potentially exceed ten thousand, I don't think we should turn it down because of the amount.
Okay.
Should take it in consideration, worthwhile projects. And then, lastly, I understand the reimbursement basis, but I'm going to anticipate that most of the applicants aren't going to be able to put out ten thousand dollars without, and expect to be reimbursed after the fact. I think it's going to have to be a little softer, maybe do it in increments or something. So I'd like to, however this gets written, you know, eventually, I think there needs to be some flexibility in some, in that regard, because most people aren't going to be able to put out thousands of dollars and then wait for a reimbursement check.
Oh, sure. And for a project of that magnitude, probably what I would be doing is I'd be working with the applicant all along the way, and providing them with funds.
Progressive funding.
Yes, progressive funding. It wouldn't be like ten thousand dollars at the very end.
That's what I'm saying, because I think these projects are going to roll out in stages.
Yeah.
You know, materials, labor, whatever, but yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jeannie, I had one of the same. Brett.
Yeah, I had a concern about the reimbursement side, that it could keep somebody from wanting to do, being able to do something. So I, I would think that we could do it, hopefully, on a basis of, here's the project, we, you know, we, we go with the project. We know what they have to do to create the project, and the money goes directly to that, as opposed to them having to find a way to come up with that money and then have them with the money back. I, I would just hate to see it be a restriction to somebody or some organization who has a great idea, but not mu, no money. So I think we need to be careful with that. So under the approval, City Manager for five thousand, or, under five thousand, Quality of Life Committee, which is two of the council members, is that what we're talking about there?
Yes, so under five thousand would be City Manager approval. If it goes above five thousand, how it would work is the application would first come to the Quality of Life Committee. They would consider it, discuss it, make a recommendation to the full council, and then the full council would approve or deny.
Okay, so all of a sudden, here comes seven projects. Three of them are under five thousand, four of them are over five thousand. And who's going to decide then who gets what? Under this, the City Manager can just say, well, I'm approving those three, and you guys can fight for the rest of the funds. So I, I don't know that that would happen, and again, this needs to play out to see what, how we really work it. But I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a conflict, I guess, on, on more money than, than is allocated. How do we set the priority on who's going to make the decision? Just a concern. It, it may not even play out that way.
Yes, and if it did play out like that, we would be communicating with the council and getting your direction at this point. And that's exactly it. We'll, we'll see how this plays out. We're not sure, are we going to get three applications at once? Are we going to get ten applications at once? We're not quite sure, but we'll be regularly communicating with you.
Thank you very much.
That, that would be a great problem to have, actually.
Yeah. Yes.
Too many applications.
Yeah.
And just to take that a little further, and you mentioned this, I think, when you were describing it, the Quality of Life Committee would review it, but whether they, they recommend it or don't recommend it, it still comes to council, correct? And they would just say, we looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't...
Or there might even be a split between the two Quality of Life members.
The Quality of Life Committee only makes recommendations?
Right.
Everything they do comes here?
Right.
It's just to prescreen it a little bit if more questions need to come up, and...
Exactly my point.
Yeah, it's no different than anything that goes to them, tight.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yes.
So my only comment, and I, and I agree with Jeannie and Brett from the reimbursement, I mean, we just have to be flexible there as you're looking at it, or I, you know, I see eighty percent of them needing an exception. So I mean, it's a seven hundred dollar project, that's probably something different than somebody coming up with a three thousand dollar project. And, you know, as long as we control and just don't give somebody a check, I, I think we're fine, and it just kind of goes through, so.
Yeah.
We'll let that go there. Any other questions?
Nope.
For staff, again, we have, it's not, while it's not a public hearing, we do have one speaker who wishes to address us. So it's Thomas, if you'd like to come up, please. Welcome, Mr. Spencer, how are you?
Good evening. Very well, and yourself? Good. My name's Thomas Spencer, good to be with you, thank you for hearing me. I wasn't going to speak, obviously, because I'm not dressed as I normally am when I speak, you can tell. I just felt the need to say that I would hope that maybe there's a fact, at least in my mind, a fact that is not being considered in the dissolution. And I don't know what went on that you're dissolving it potentially, the History and Arts Commission. But for me, personally, the History and Arts Commission was the difference between me sitting on my couch, screaming at you guys on the TV, and being mad at governance in general. The History and Arts Commission not only got me involved in the community, well, I was involved anyway, because I'm nosy, but officially involved, but it also helped me to understand and appreciate the strength of a constituent's point of view. Even unto Washington DC, we had a good affiliation with the Smithsonian, which was cultured. When I was in Washington DC, I was on a like of, well, my wife goes on a thing there twice a year, so I went, and I was going to go to the Smithsonian, but I didn't. I went to Lundgren, and blah, 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 and they said, oh, here, let us help you out. So for me, it helped me to become what I believe citizens should be. To have a sustainable community, we must have involved citizens. And to not have that, that roadway would have never happened for me otherwise, because I don't have a degree, people don't usually like me, I don't really apply for a lot of stuff. But as an artist and an arts businessperson for several, several years, I felt I had a chance. So that's pretty much all I'd like to say. I am a bit worried about the granting process, because the thing was with the commission is that we did, particularly some of our major projects, which obviously you're not going to be considering at this point, we had a gathering, a group of people, and we utilized all of our, both our knowledge, our resources, which are associations or whatever, and our, our association's knowledge to come up with these projects. So I just wanted to say that it was a great experience, and I would hate to think that heretofore others might not have that opportunity, because now I'm, as you know, fairly active. I mean, I don't come and hang out that much, but I do things in my neighborhood. I'm, I do things within the city when and if it's necessary or allowed. And that would not have been the case. So that is all I have to say tonight, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Thomas, and we appreciated you, your input when you were on the commission, so, thank you. Any additional comments or questions for staff?
One more, yeah. I guess, you know, this, another comment, and that is, you know, this is, this is not easy to, to say goodbye to a commission that's been with us for many years. I, I look at the numbers, I realize that the potential is out there to put more money out in the community in, under History and Arts than actually hit the community before, because a portion of it was, was used for stipends and for an intern, and so it was basically, in a sense, payroll. And so from that perspective, I think it's good to have more money going out to directly impact History and Arts. If for some reason that, and the other thing I'd like to say is, the people that have served, and I thank you so much for your service, I'm anticipating and hoping will continue to be engaged and will be grant applicants. It'll just look a little different, but you'll still be, I mean, that's where your interest is, that's where your heart is, but you'll still be engaged in this process, because I think you've added value to our community. The, the third thing is, that I wanted to say is, presuming that this gets approved tonight, and we move forward under this new concept, which I am willing to try, if after a period of time, it, it does not appear to be functioning as we expected it to, then we need to revisit it and, and take another look at, number one, the decision we made, or some kind of hybrid or something going forward, because I don't want to lose the emphasis we have on maintaining our history and developing the art that we can have within our community. And that art is not just the painted picture, but it's performing arts, it's, you know, it's musical arts. Arts in the broadest sense of the word, I think, adds an element of quality to a community that I don't want to see lost in Citrus Heights. That makes sense.
Steve, did you have?
Well, I didn't, I don't like the word disillusion, I, dis- disillusion, is that the word? I don't like it. I, I see it more as a evolution, and I'm hopeful that we coalesce as, much like the Historical Society, and that we see a nonprofit grow out of this with the folks that are involved now, and not be encumbered by government rules and meeting and Brown Act and all that. And so I see great potential, and not only, we're talking twenty thousand, but we're really potentially talking forty thousand if we, if we have matching grants involved. So I'm very encouraged by that. I agree with Jeannie. This is something new for us. We may stumble a little bit and find some issues that we need to take care of, and, but I'm all for trying something new and, and seeing those that are involved now really stand up and, and make it work. You know, to, to have seven, it was a seven-member commission, and, you know, if you have four artists on there, they couldn't talk. artists on there, they couldn't talk outside the meeting about issues pertaining to the commission, and now they can. Now they can form a group, and I'd like to see that happen. So, again, evolution.
Great. Our, Brett, you guys good?
Yeah, just one quick thing, I just, I know I've heard a couple of folks talking about this, is why are we throwing out the commission? Why are we stopping this? And I don't want folks to take it in that vein. This is an opportunity for us to take the burden off of staff and off of the commission members, of having to go with the Brown Act, having to have all of these set things that cost you money from what is really your passion, and that's art, and that's history. And for those of you who have served, I thank you for that. It's a backbone of a community we don't want to lose. And so as, I'm for this particular change, for trying it out, to see where we can go with it, because I think it gives us more opportunity. But what I would like to see is this unofficialdom of you folks staying together in your artist groups and in your, in the way you collaborate with each other, and try to bring things forward that you know will benefit the community. You're the artists, you're the ones who have your hand on the pulse of our community that way. And I know several artists out there who have not participated in community events that do some beautiful work, and I think that you can tap into those under this type of a setup. They may be willing to come forward and be part of that, and so I encourage you, if this passes the way we're going, and I do support it, then I think it's an opportunity for those of you who are, have been on the commission, who are active artists in the community, to really get together and collaborate on things where we need to go from this point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett, are you good? All right. I think my fellow council member said it eloquently enough, so I would say ditto rather than repeat their comments. What's the pleasure of the council? Two resolutions before us.
I move approval.
I'm assuming you mean of the resolution and the reading of the ordinance both together?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Catherine, thank you to the commission, and as Jeannie said, we'll give it a try, and if that doesn't work, we'll figure something else out. Next item, Amy.
Next item is number 11. The subject is implementing classification changes to the executive management broadband and adopting the amended pay rate schedule for the City of Citrus Heights. You have two resolutions before you, one, implementing the classification changes to the executive management broadband and adopting the amended pay rate schedule.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Chris Boyd, the City Manager. I, some of the council might be aware, I've spent this last year, the first year as City Manager, really conducting a lot of assessment on the organization, and really looking at our last 20 years and all the successes there, and really focused on our vision really for the next decade, and looking at our talent inside the organization and the level of development and skill levels that our folks have, and it's all extraordinarily impressive. And one of the things that I've done is really reorganized the executive team to make the team really smaller and capitalize on some extraordinary experience and talent that we have with our department heads. So, we are taking the executive team really from currently, well, recently it's been five department heads to three, and in doing that, we are substantially enhancing and increasing the responsibility of two of those directors, and should the item be approved, all, during City Manager reports, I'll talk more about them, but specifically, we have traditionally had the human resources function and the finance function as separate departments with department heads. I have taken both of those departments and to, turned them into divisions, creating one department, Administrative Services, and made that department head also Assistant City Manager to assist me with a number of other functions other than just being department head over that larger department. Also, I have, on the other side of the House, we have two departments, General Services and Community and Economic Development. I've, leaving those as two departments, but putting one director over both. And so, what that has done is created really two new classifications, and those enhanced responsibilities, one Assistant City Manager and the other Community Services Director. So, as before you tonight, as a piece of all that, it's required that the council approve those new classifications, and specifically, the law now requires that in the pay rate schedule, those classifications are approved by the council and contain, you know, a number of requirements, eight specifically, that are in the staff report. So what I'm requesting from the council tonight are really two things. One's recommending that the council adopt a resolution creating the executive management classifications of Assistant City Manager and Community Services Director, and the other recommending that the council adopt the resolutions before you, amending the pay rate schedule in the manner that I just described. And then lastly, as the council knows, now effective this year, the law requires that the mayor or member of the council read specifically a statement on executive compensation such as this. So those are the items before you, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Question for City Manager? All right, so I get to do my part. This item is a recommendation to approve two executive management classifications as follows. Assistant City Manager, salary range 157 to 207 and some change, and two Community Service Director, salary range 150,000 to 198 and some change. These classifications will provide oversight to one or more departments as determined by the City Manager. The classifications will participate in the same fringe benefits as other executive managers. All right, I did my part. What's the council's pleasure? Two items.
I will, find them back here. There we go.
Two resolutions, I guess, I guess we-
We have two resolutions, let me look at-
Both at once?
Yeah, we can do both at once, yeah. So I move that we approve the two resolutions as stated.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. I guess what this means, if your first name is Rhonda-
[laughing]
That's good news for both of you, Rhonda and Rhonda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is Department Report Number 12. The subject is update on transportation funding SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Great. Oh. Hello, Regina.
Hello, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Regina, General Services Department. Going to provide you with a brief, brief update on SB 1, and I will make sure that I keep it shorter than the CIP presentation. And hopefully that a lot of this information isn't too redundant, I understand council probably does receive a lot of information from some of the professional groups that you all participate in as part of board members, but some of this information is also for the public and anybody else who's watching. So the SB 1 background, SB 1 was signed by our governor in April of 2017 after months and years leading up to trying to come up with a transportation bill to provide additional funding for our deteriorating transportation system. It created the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program to address deferred maintenance in the state highway system as well as our local streets and roads. The revenues projected are as follows, but also not limited to just these, there are some other elements within these increases. So the 12 cent per gallon increase in vehicle fuel, this is for gasoline tax, with an inflation adjustment provided in the bill, estimated at 2.5 billion annually will be coming in, and this goes into effect November 1st of this year. Again, within the vehicle increase, the 12 cent, there's also some elements to the excise tax and the sales tax swap. Also, 50% of a 20 cent per gallon increase for diesel excise tax, again with an inflation adjustment, is provided within the bill, with an estimated 1.1 billion annually coming in, and this comes into effect November 1st of 2017. There will also be a portion of a new transportation improvement fee under the vehicle licensing fee law. This will vary from 25 to 175 dollars per vehicle based on the depreciated value of the vehicle, and this will be estimated at 1.7 billion annually. Again, it will be a portion of these revenues. This will go into effect November 1st of 20, excuse me, November 1st, 2018. And then the zero emissions vehicle registration fee, estimated at 19 million annually, this is a flat 100 dollar per vehicle for zero emissions vehicles, goes into effect July of 2020. So, what does any of this information mean for Citrus Heights? Basically, this provides increased funding for our transportation, bicycle, pedestrian and transit projects and programs. So for 2017, 2018, the revenues will start coming in December, as they are collected during the month of November, we will receive these monthly, just as we do our gas tax revenues. Projects will include for 1718, a new pavement management system, and provide for additional funding for the 2018 residential street resurfacing program. Both of these projects were identified within the CIP that we brought to council in May and approved as part of our budget. We had anticipated that there would be a requirement to have to receive council approval ahead of time, so we did do that. We also provided the, per statute, the reports to the League of California Cities and the California Transportation Commission, which were due by October 16th, we've already met our obligation, and we also had to confirm that our maintenance of effort level was as reported by the State Controller's Office, and lucky for us, it was less than 4,000 dollars, which is definitely doable for us. And it took into consideration three fiscal years, previous fiscal years, of general fund dollars that we had received for transportation efforts. And then additionally, 2018, 2019, the projections only go for two fiscal years, so our projected estimated revenues will be a little over 1.4 million for 2018, 2019. Again, this will provide for additional funding for the 2019 residential resurfacing program and transportation maintenance needs, which is signage, pavement, marking and striping. But SB 1 is also more than just fixing potholes, so SB 1 does provide for enhanced grant programs. Citrus Heights, as Mayor had touched on a little bit ago, regarding SAICOG's approval or recommendation for the Electric Greenway Project, as well as Mariposa 4, those are all part, both part of the augmented active transportation projects program, so we are benefiting from SB 1 already this fall, and that is actually over 7 million dollars for the Electric Greenway Program that we have been awarded. And Local Partnership Program, this is the 200 million a year that, in these SB 1 revenues, that will be set aside specifically for self-help counties. For us, that is the Sacramento Transportation Authority, who is the self-help county, so we will be working directly with STA to identify projects, viable projects from our community that we already have 50% funding for, now whether that's from our local money, through STA money, grant dollars, what have you, and then we can put forth an application which will be submitted to the CTC for consideration for funding. And bumps in the road, no pun intended, there are repeal efforts, and what does that mean for us? So, obviously that would be lost revenues, it would be basically status quo how we are right now, and we know that our roads are deteriorating at a rapid rate. Our PCI, our Payment Condition Index, right now is at 64, and we are not 100% confident that that number is accurate at that level, it might even be worse than that. So when we do conduct our pavement management system update this December, we'll be going out with an RFP for those services, we will be able to see before springtime exactly what do our streets look like, how bad are they? And then, of course, if the repeal does go on the ballot in 2018, November of 2018, and if it does prevail, those funds go away, and we could potentially lose the augmented funds that we will be receiving for the Electric Greenway, because those are funded, the construction piece of it, over 6 million is being funded by the augmented SB 1 funds. So we plan on doing some, a lot of information for the public, just putting information out there, what it means for Citrus Heights, take pictures when we are utilizing our SB 1 funds for any specific projects, such as when we do the pavement management system update, we anticipate that it'll be kind of a cool vehicle that's going to go out and using lasers and high technology to be able to identify all the deteriorated areas within the streets, so we'll be able to put some pictures out for the public, also put some information on some of the other websites, such as Saving Your Streets California, some information from the CTC, so our residents and our voters can see all the different levels of transparency and reporting that is required by our agencies as we utilize these funds, and then any other information we feel is pertinent out there.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions for Regina? Brett?
Go back to your first slide, please. On the second bullet, it says 50% of a 20 cent per gallon increase. What does that mean? Like, of the 20 cents that's collected, 50% of it's going to go towards state highway or whatever, road stuff, and the other 50% is going to go somewhere else?
Somewhere else, has not been identified within the bill that we've seen.
Has nothing to, it can have nothing to do with the road, right?
It could. And there's also, the excise, the difference between the excise tax and the sales tax, some different swaps they're doing, and resetting of the excise tax to what the initial level was in 2010 when they did the triple flip on the taxes.
And then the third bullet, it says a portion of the new transportation improvement fund that we're all going to pay when we register our vehicles, only a portion-
Only a portion.
-is going to come for roads and stuff like that guaranteed.
Correct.
So then, can you go to your bumps in the road slide? When it says inform the public, are we going to be very careful and not to take a political position, and I imagine we can say that, here's an improved road that was paid for through SB 1, and that's fine, but I wouldn't like to see, here's a really lousy road that we would really like to improve, please support, you know, or please do not support the tax repeal.
That is correct. We will be very careful in how we put our communication out to the public.
Good, thank you very much for that, because I know we haven't taken a position as a council, and I feel that the repeal of the gas tax is going to become very popular, so I would hate to see us doing it the other way, but thank you very much for that.
Questions, Jamie?
On the, if the gas tax repeal was successful, are any monies that have been received going to have to be repaid?
No, we were actually advised last week by the California State Association of Counties, and they had indicated that we will not, it would be moving forward and not retroactive, so all the funds that we receive and expend, or receive, period, we would be able to utilize and not have to repay.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Regina. I suppose we'll be getting updates-
Yes.
... throughout the next 12 months.
Yes, you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next Department Report is introduction of the Property and Evidence Team.
Lieutenant Russo, Chief Lawrence, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've asked Lieutenant Russo and Sergeant Schaefer to allow me to introduce their presentation tonight, because frankly, one of the funnest things I get to do as a police chief is highlight the great work some of our people do, and tonight's presentation is really about highlighting our Property and Evidence Team, some of our unsung heroes that do a tremendous amount of complex and critical work behind the scenes, that really you don't see often in a police department, so we wanted to be able to highlight them tonight, and I'll share with you that best practices in the policing industry are that when you have a transition in police chiefs, that a, an outside property and evidence audit should be conducted, so you consult with somebody on the outside, they come into a thorough audit, and that gives the outgoing police chief, the incoming police chief, both a clean bill of health, and you know that your property and evidence room is performing adequately and maintaining high ethical standards. And it should come to you as no surprise that we passed with flying colors, our audit was conducted in July, and the police chief before me set in place some outstanding systems, hired the right people, and tonight's presentation is really about demonstrating what they do, some of the things that you'll see in the presentation are what the audit found, and then really highlighting the good work that our people do.
And way to get a plug-in for your boss, I like that.
[laughing]
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, council, mayor. Lieutenant Jason Russo, I oversee the Professional Standards and Training Unit, which also oversees the Property and Evidence Unit and CSI. We have a few of our CSI staff here tonight in the front row, just to give you a couple of them, we have CSI Danielle Veal, who started originally in 2006 with us. CSI Mandy is home with pregnancy leave, so she's out right now, but she couldn't be here tonight, but she's one of our CSI as well. We have data entry Kathy Pentecost here with us, she's been with us since 2014, and then CSI Andrea Burnett was unable to be here, she's had a flight earlier tonight, and she's been with us since 2015. Some of our accomplishments, I'm going to let Janet Schaefer talk about some of the highlights here.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, I'm Sergeant-
I'm Sergeant Janet Schaefer. It's been my honor to serve the city of Citrus Heights since before launch in 2006. I currently serve as the Professional Standards and Training Sergeant, and it is my honor to present a couple of my team members, as well as the details of what they have accomplished since the launch back in 2006. Some of the duties of property and evidence is not only handling the crime scene investigations and dealing with people and scenes, really in the darkest moments that many people will ever experience. And it takes a very special person to go to that scene and to examine it in the amount of, and level of detail that they do. They are exceptional, they are detailed, they are extremely talented, and they are beyond committed to the city. Danielle has been with here, she's one of the legacy employees since before launch. She started out as the records assistant. Kathy and Andrea were both volunteers, and Mandy was the data entry before she became CSI. So these are an exceptional amount of loyalty and dedication to the city, as well as the Citrus Heights Police Department. Another duty that they do besides handling crime scene investigation is also handling the property and the evidence that the officers take out in the field and bring back to the police department for security. It can be because they found it and want to keep it for the rightful owner to collect it. That would be for safekeeping. Perhaps it's property that's been found out in the field, and we want to try to identify who that owner is, and so part of their duty is to use all of our databases and try to figure out how to return it to the rightful owner. Some of it is that when someone is in custody, we want to keep their property safe until they can reclaim it again, and so their duty is to secure that until they can come to the police department and retrieve it. And also to process all the evidence. So some of the numbers that you're looking at on your slide is the amount of property that they have taken in over the last 11 or so years. That's over 162,000 pieces of property. This is every item that they have handled over the years, and all the data entry and packaging and putting it on the shelves and safekeeping it, and then dispositioning it, meaning returning it to the owner, throwing it away if the law allows us to do that. And so I'm just really impressed with the amount of work that they have done. We have purged or let go of that property about 105,000 times. We also disposition drugs, weapons, drug paraphernalia, flammable liquids, explosives, it's really anything that could potentially be a hazard out to our city as well. We'll take that to a secure location and properly dispose it so it's no longer a hazard or a danger. They have processed, meaning for fingerprints and looking for DNA, over 2,700 pieces of property. They serve on-call 24/7. They also provide training to the officers and detectives regularly, and they also participate in our community outreach.
Some of that outreach includes our Citizens Academy, as well as our PAL program, and our Youth Leadership Academy, as well as our youth COP camp in the summer. They actually participate in these events and let the kids fingerprint, you know, soda cans and get a firsthand experience of what CSI does.
In 2016, they were awarded the Citrus Heights Police Department Team Achievement Ribbon, which is a high honor at our agency. And as well, a specially highlight is 2016 California Property and Evidence Technician of the Year for the entire state was Danielle Veal.
And as the chief mentioned earlier, we just had our audit, and these are just a couple of high-level highlights of the results. There was 39 categories of performance, and they also did an audit of about 71 cases. And you could see that above standards, we were in 14 categories, which is an outstanding achievement. We were meet standards plus, meaning just above the meet standards in 16, and that we were nine categories in meet standards and none below standards. And a couple comments or quotes from the auditor down below. "I would rate the current operation of the CHPD property unit easily in the top 5 to 10 percent of all property units in California. This audit confirmed that the real strength of the CHPD property unit is the dedication, hard work, and professionalism of the property unit staff."
In addition to all this hard work, they also have fun on the job. So these are just a couple photographs to highlight some of their teamwork, friendship, hard work, and the honor that it is to serve.
And with that, we'd like to commend them and recognize them this evening.
Kathy and Danielle, will you stand, please?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, truly, ladies work behind the scenes, you don't always get the limelight, but, you know, if it worked for you, everything the officer does up front can't be followed through in terms of going to court, you know, the whole processing chain of evidence, et cetera, so thank you for all you do. I have to say, I watch a lot of TV, so I am really amazed at how much you can do in an hour. You guys are great.
DNA results and everything.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a couple of seconds?
You can.
Would you please stand up so everybody can see you?
I get it.
Yes. I did 30 years in law enforcement. I did 27 years with the California Attorney General's Office doing homicide investigations, officer-involved shootings, and crime scene reconstruction. I've seen cases won and lost based on the work that you do. I've reconstructed cases of much as 35 years old, and I've seen the work that good folks did and not-so-good folks did hamper the progress of investigations that were important in the communities they were in. So you guys have a heck of a job to do, and I take it you're doing it really, really well. And I'm very proud of you as an individual, as retired law enforcement. I'm super proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Brett?
Yeah. Just what he said, yeah. I do want to also just reiterate that, that it's not a TV show, like Jeff was-
Come on, give me a credit.
But it's so critical to the success of law enforcement functions, but also somewhat so unrecognized in the way that dispatchers are too, that without extreme professionalism on the side of people handling evidence and property, cases get tossed easily, easily. And so thank you very much for what you do, and we can't recognize you enough. Thank you very much. I also want to take a moment, though, because she's never here in the limelight that I can remember, to thank Sergeant Schaefer. Sergeant Schaefer is an incredible resource to Citrus Heights, and I'm mainly saying that as a citizen and from social media aspects. I have never seen a person, a staff person, that has been so accessible and also so responsive in interacting with the public in the way that she does, and it's a real treasure for Citrus Heights and the residents to have this person that they can reach out to and almost instantly respond to them, and not just with, you know, with the blow-off or whatever, just, but really interact, and when she says she'll do something for somebody, she gets it done, and she does it, and I want to thank you.
Great. Thank you again, ladies. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Amy.
Next item is City Manager Items.
Mr. Boyd.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to really formally announce the promotions of two of our executives here at the city. And I would first like to invite up to stand with me Rhonda Sherman, if you wouldn't mind. Rhonda has been with the city since 1998, and one of our longest-serving employees, maybe second, somewhere in there. And she has been involved in many things, in a lot of work over that period of time, city clerk duties, and she's been involved, was involved in forming the city's first P-bid, and, but she's served really the last decade as an executive director over community and economic development. She has her Bachelor of Arts degree in urban studies from California State University of Northridge, and her Master of Arts in urban planning from UCLA. I have worked with Rhonda for now over a decade. She's been a tremendous colleague. I've been so impressed with her, and what a great member of our team, particularly for me in this last year as a new city manager in that role. She has been promoted to Community Services Director, which means she will oversee now two departments. As I said, she's been the director over community and economic development, but now she will also be over the General Services Department with a very talented team there. And she is, again, just extraordinary. I'm just so pleased to really appoint her with these additional responsibilities. She's highly rated among her staff and has such a great track record and unbelievable experiences, I've mentioned, so it's my honor just to announce really her new position, Rhonda Sherman.
Woo-hoo! Stay here. And it's an easier title to say, too.
Yes.
Right, yeah. That would be your favorite part. I next want to announce the promotion of Rhonda Rivera. Rhonda has been with us since 2005 and has served in a number of capacities on the administrative side of the House. She really is an expert in human resources, where she's been the director for some years now, risk management. I can tell you, in being myself in government for, you know, some 28 years and a police chief, 15 of those, you know, I've never worked with a better human resources director. Their critical role in everything that we do. Her knowledge throughout all the complex pieces in that field are better than really most labor attorneys that I've worked with. She's just brilliant on these topics, and she has great experience even prior to coming to Citrus Heights in finance, and she now is overseeing both human resources and finance, and that experience and expertise, as we've seen in just the last couple of months, is really shining through. So I, she had great education, been a great partner to me, and a great also member of our team as we've started this new journey. Both of them, so proud of them. Extraordinarily smart, they both know what to do, and they know, both know what needs to be done. So along with Chief Lawrence, this is now our executive team, and I'm super proud of that, and wanted to make that announcement official, so thank you.
Woo-hoo! I guess he don't want to say it. Yeah. Thank you. I think Rhonda's our first Assistant City Manager, right?
Right.
Well, okay. I just want to say thank you. I mean, this is an honor and a privilege. I have been with Citrus Heights, as Chris Boyd had mentioned, for well over 10 years, seeing the start of the police department. And having worked at other public agencies before, I have been nothing but impressed with what I have seen here, and I knew after just the first year that I wanted this to be my forever home when it came to employment. And I live in Citrus Heights, I love this community, I believe in everything that you stand for, and just so grateful for the leadership and for your leadership over both the community and for this agency, and this is most, an honor and a privilege, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, Rhonda, it's like, dang, now I got to go up there.
You weren't supposed to do that. I also wanted to say that this is an honor and a privilege. About 20 years ago, I started at the city and I never looked back. I really appreciate the support of the city manager and of the council. We've always had great councils, and that's really important. I underestimated how excited and emotional I would be about this, but I am, so thank you very much, and I look forward to serving you in this capacity.
Great.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda and Rhonda.
Thank you.
Like I said, if you got a name of Rhonda, come work for the city. Great. Yeah, get in there, get in for one, chief, come on. Okay, sorry.
That's right. My gosh. Hey, Chris.
I think there was a song like that, wasn't there?
Bill, me, Rhonda.
Yeah, Rhonda, yeah.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yay, good job.
Was that it for city manager reports? Okay. Next item, Amy.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Council members?
Did you want to bring up your item to get on the council's calendar?
Sure, I guess we could do it in a simple way. Last council meeting, I requested, or I brought forward the issue of exploring, providing the Safer Lock prescription drug device, locking device to the public. I was looking for a second supporter of that to go forward with the city taking a look at that, and I'm hoping that Mr. Miller joins me in that.
Well, I did, because I did inform, you know, you spoke about it at the last meeting, it sounded like a good idea. Having talked to the city manager after second-
Do it here.
Pardon?
Yeah, no, we just need to schedule it for the next council meeting.
Okay. One of the things was trying to hit the prescription take back, and this month, it's not going to happen, so.
Understood, yeah.
So there's a second there.
So we'll put it on the next council meeting?
And it doesn't even have to go to the next council meeting. I'm okay if it's, you know, a little more-
Remind me, did you give us a price on it? I just don't recall.
It's my understanding that the device would be available for in the range of $5 to $6.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll sign it to the group, and they'll put it on a council meeting for us. I'm sorry, could I ask, what exactly are we, were we being asked to bring back?
Possibly just exploring ways to either provide the device or to partner with others. I've requested a meeting with Supervisor Sue Frost to discuss the aspect of maybe her being involved in that too, since we are in her district, and just can maybe looking at that as a partnership, and also maybe even reaching out to some of our businesses that might be logical, such as Mercy, to figure out ways to fund that item and then provide it to the community.
Okay. Do I have two council members for this? You do. Okay, thank you. All right, any other council members wishing anything to be coming forward? So just so I'm clear, going into November and December, because of the way that the various holidays, et cetera, will we be talking about that next council meeting, specific to November, if we're going to have just the one meeting? Or will we deal with that the first meeting in November?
Typically, we just hold one meeting in November. The second meeting does fall, you know, the week of Thanksgiving.
Yep, okay.
Still do it.
All right, no problem. Great. Nothing else? We'll go ahead and call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Hey, gentlemen. I normally take our two.